Yeah.
All right, I'd like to call to order the March 12th, 2024 meeting of the Columbia Heights School Board. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Michelle, will you do the roll call, please?
I sure will. Um, Hul?
Here.
Maderas?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Grandlin?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Petway?
Here.
Superintendent Stenbik?
Here.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yep.
Um, our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Start with our agenda approval adjustments and announcements. Can I get a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
Michelle, in a second.
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion? Hearing that, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next, we have our announcements. One second. Okay. Sorry. I was just making sure that my announcements on my paper matched what was on my screen. On March 19th, um, Tuesday at 5:30, we have a work session, um, here, uh, or excuse me, it's in the Columbia Heights High School library. Um, on, uh, March 25th through 29th, there is no school. Please note, there is no school board meeting on March 26th. Um, March 29th, the district is closed. On April 5th, there is, it is a no-school day for students. On April 9th at 5:00 PM, we have the Subcommittee on Policy in the Community Room. Also, on April 9th at 5:00 PM, the Subcommittee on Community Engagement in the Training Room. And April 9th, uh, Tuesday at 6:00 PM is our regular school board meeting here in the Community Room. Um, next, we have communication to the board. At this time, any citizen, employee, um, may, or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this, uh, um, at this meeting or request presented at this time. And time will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Do we have anybody who wishes to address the board? Any blue cards? Okay.
Can I respond to her earlier question?
Sure.
1916, 1952, 56, 92, 2020, 2024.
Okay. Great. For, and for those listening, there was a question about, before the meeting started, about presidential primary days. Thank you, Mr. Honig. Um, next, we have our consent agenda. Um, on, uh, can I, on our consent agenda is the personnel report from March 12th. The seniority list for clerical, custodial, education assistant, food service, homeschool liaison, lunch duty monitor, teacher, and ECFE teacher seniority list, lane changes, policy second reading for 616 system account, 619 staff development standards, 707 transportation of public school students, 710 extracurricular, uh, transportation, and meeting minutes from the February 20th work session and the February 20th regular meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Julie, in a second.
Uh, second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion? Okay, hearing that, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you. Um, next, we have our acknowledgement of contributions. Since this is a resolution, I will read this. Acknowledgement of contribution resolution. Minnesota statute 123B dot zero two permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district, request donations or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. On that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13, that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background for $10,300. The background, um, includes monetary donation, um, monetary donations. A donation of $350 was made to Columbia Academy Robotics by Tasty Pizza for state team sponsorship. A donation of $125 was made to Columbia Academy Robots, Ro- Robotics by Heights Chiropractic Clinic for state team sponsorship. A donation of $100 made to Valley View by RCN Inc., DBA Columbia Heights Insty Prints for the Valley View Fun Run. A donation of $30 was made to North Park by the Blackballed Giving Fund. A donation of $2,000 was made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund by Dean and Joy Bliss. A donation of $1,000 was made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund, uh, 2024 by Michael Scholl. Donation of $3,000 was made to Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund by Greg Gardner. A donation of $100 was made to the Valley View Fun Run by Metro Therapy. Donation of $2,000 was made to Columbia Heights High School for Teacher Appreciation by Jennifer Carrera. A donation of $100 was made to Valley View Fun Run by Colin M.K. Anderson Agency. And a donation of $50 was made to Valley View for Student Needs from the Blackballed Giving Fund. Value and Kind, a donation of winter gear, was made to Columbia Heights High School for Student Needs by Camp Digital. Estimated value $1,445. Total fiscal year 2023, 2024 monetary contributions to date, $77,955.42. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Michelle, in a second.
Second.
Second by Jessica. Any discussion? Michelle?
I mean, I just want to say thank you to, um, everyone now and before and in the future who will donate whatever it is, um, that they can to our schools and our students. I'm grateful for it, and I know that we're all appreciative of, of the benevolent community that we're in.
Absolutely. Thank you, Michelle. Any other discussion? Jessica?
I just wanted to note that it's also especially exciting to see, um, our scholarship fund grow, especially this time of year as we're getting closer and closer to that milestone of graduation for students. So, we really appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Wonderful. Um, we will proceed to vote since this is a resolution. Michelle, will you do the roll call, please?
Yes. Hul?
Aye.
Maderas?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Grandlin?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye. Resolution passes. Thank you. Thanks to our community. Um, next, we have our discussion reports, um, and information items, um, starting with our reports from members of the board. And we will start with Laura.
Oh, thank you. I love going first. Um, I guess I'll, I'll just keep this fairly short and brief. I mean, I know it's been a couple of weeks since we've all been together, um, but, um, I, uh, there hasn't been a whole lot going on, other than I went to a 916, the 916 board meeting. I got to chair it. Lots of fun. Um, we did settle up the teachers' contracts there, and, uh, we did talk about a lot of the, uh, the different site visits. And I'm very happy that a lot of, um, the members of this board have managed to get out and see some of those additional resources that, that, um, that we collaborate with other districts, um, and, uh, some of the great innovations that, that, that assist our students. Um, I also, uh, wa- uh, was, um, asked to, uh, be a part of the, um, the, the search for the new police chief. We were doing, they're doing, they were doing a survey, and it should be available to the public. Anybody can fill out the survey. And, uh, we were just assisting on the types of questions, um, that needed to be asked and making sure that it was accessible as possible to all members of the community. Other than that, um, and, uh, the, um, Subcommittee on Community Engagement just prior to this.
Thank you. Michelle?
Yep. Um, so I was able to attend the pet beds for animal shelters. That was a couple of weeks ago. Um, lots of fun. Uh, I also attended, um, a immersion melee event where there was wrestling, immersion hall, um, which was very enjoyable, uh, for our family. Lots, lots of, um, shouting, um, from my daughter, which I didn't realize was there, and we've awakened some sort of wrestling monster there. Um, I also, um, attended the BIPOC Family Advisory Committee meeting over at North Park, attended MSBA's Officer Training Workshop, um, for my new role as clerk on the board. I volunteered at KohaiCon, uh, which was a lot of fun. A lot of people came out. Um, and, um, I've also been a part of the core planning team for our strategic planning, been a part of those meetings. I attended the SpongeBob Musical, which was everything I dreamed of and more. Um, and, uh, I attended the Subcommittee on Community Engagement, uh, meeting before this one.
Thank you so much, Michelle.
Thanks.
Mary?
Okay. Um, so, I have been pretty busy. Um, I've had several phone calls with Superintendent Stenbik, um, members Maderas and Petway, and Chair Mueller, and community members over the past few weeks. Um, I had a meeting with Superintendent Stenbik to discuss the squish that is seen down, um, between Valley View and CA. Um, it's, you know, we have a lot of the same number of students between, uh, up here at the district center and the, um, Highland and the high school, but there's more space, sort of, um, to get everybody out. So Superintendent Stenbik and I sort of discussed some of that, and, um, I believe she may have a little bit more of an update. But also, just more to come in general. Um, I attended, I attended a second meet, or the meeting with Laura, um, regarding the, you know, what are we looking for in a police chief and getting some of that community involvement, um, which was really great, a fantastic discussion. It was wonderful. Um, I also attended the SpongeBob Musical where I saw Chair Mueller and members Petway and Maderas, um, on opening night. I don't like SpongeBob. Please don't hate me, everyone. I know, I know. Um, but that was, it was such a fun, um, funny, funny show. And, um, the thing that I, one of the things I really, really loved was, on opening night, a lot of the high school theater kids came down to, um, support the, the middle school theater kids. And it was, it was just so wonderful to see. Um, again, like, our students really just being present for each other in ways that is just amazing. Um, I had an opportunity to observe the Senate SRO debate yesterday. Um, and also had a chance to speak with Senator Kinesh and Councilmember Spriggs, um, around that. And then, prior to this, I attended the chair meeting and the Subcommittee on Community Engagement.
Thank you, Mary. Jessica?
Sure. You went on to order, so not all.
No, I was trying to see if I was gonna go this way and then come back around this way, so.
Very sneaky, Chair Mueller.
Sneaky.
Yeah. Um, well, thank you. It, I, we haven't met in a while, and it's been busy. Um, so I have been participating, uh, in the Strategic Planning Core Team Meetings along with Member Petway. Um, those have been really good conversations. Um, I know that we're gonna be getting a presentation to the board, um, pretty shortly here. Um, and we have a lot of data. It's generated a lot of really good discussion, um, and some good conversations. So I'm excited to continue to be part of that and, um, see what you all think of what the, that core team and our design team are bringing forward. We've had three meetings. We have one more meeting this week on Thursday, um, and then the design team will meet. Um, and then I also attended one of the, um, conversations around the position description and community survey for, um, the new Columbia Heights Police Chief. Um, I really appreciate, um, that the city reached out to our school district and to other community, um, and business and faith, uh, leader partners, um, to involve them in that conversation and make sure that we can get, um, uh, really, uh, good feedback from our community on, uh, what we really want in that position and the, the person in that role. So that was a good conversation as well. Um, I attended the, uh, Columbia Academy PTO meeting, uh, last week. Um, and they are, uh, busy planning, um, sort of their send-off, uh, in the spring for their eighth graders and a celebration for, for all the students there. So that would be exciting to see. Um, I did also attend the Columbia Academy Musical. Um, I was able to make two out of the three performances, and I wanna just add my own congratulations to the heap of kudos, um, for all of the students involved in the cast and the crew and all of the staff that, um, has really long days making that happen for our students. It's pretty incredible that we have, um, that as an example of, of, of just one of the arts opportunities that we have for students in, in a district of our size. So that's pretty awesome. Um, and then I also attended the Policy Subcommittee Meeting, uh, prior to the board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. Julie?
Um, as treasurer, I did review December and January's, um, financial reports. And, um, I actually identified an expense that although was normal, was unusual to me. And so I'm gonna bring it up as a board topic today. Um, I had a couple of conversations with, um, Superintendent Stenbik. One of, one of the things we talked about was an opportunity at my own CPA firm for high school students to have a chance to have an internship in accounting and finance, which I'm actually really excited about. And so I had some conversations at work about, you know, tapping into our student, students here at Columbia Heights. And so I'm hoping that somebody will apply. Um, kind of excited about that. Um, and then, um, Subcommittee on Policy, I attended just before this meeting. And I would have to say, for January and December and January expenses, there were no unusual items, except for the one that I wanna talk about later.
Okay. Thanks, Julie.
Um, for my report, um, I will echo what the others said. I attended SpongeBob Musical, um, like Vice Chair Grandlin said, on opening night. Um, a couple of things. One, I have not laughed or smiled that much in a really long time. It was hilarious, intentionally hilarious. Um, the stage presence of those students was incredible. Like, they were amazing. Um, and they obviously were having a ton of fun. I also, um, saw that there were so many of them. Like, it, when they kind of did their final curtain call, they all didn't fit across the stage. Like, there was, had to be like a little second row. Um, and I've never seen so many people in the PAC before. Um, I think there's probably like three empty seats. So it was, um, very well attended. They did such a great job. So, like Jessica said, kudos to the students, the, the staff, their support, um, the tech, everybody. Um, it was a great show. Um, I, um, also had conversations with Superintendent Stenbik and with Vice Chair Grandlin. Um, I attended, uh, the chair meeting prior to this, as well as the Subcommittee on Policy. Um, next, we have the Superintendent's Report and Correspondents. Superintendent Stenbik?
Thank you. Uh, well, first, the month of Ramadan has begun, so Ramadan Mubarak, for those who, um, observe that month. And spring sports and activities are underway. Um, I was able to attend the boys' basketball game on Saturday, the high school basketball game. They won, and therefore, they're moving on to section finals, which will be against De La Salva this Thursday evening. I do wanna thank the Columbia Heights Boosters for their financial support, which allows us to provide a fan bus to still water for the game. It's also live streaming, if anyone wants to stream it. If we qualify for the state tournament, there may be some modifications to the high school, uh, Columbia Heights High School schedule, March 20th and March 21st. So, um, I was just reminiscing and found some 2017 photos of, of you, Chair Mueller, at the, at the game when we were at state tournament last go-around. So, very exciting. Um, I also attended the Middle School Musical last weekend. Um, I agree, it was, it was really fun to watch. Um, additionally, every time I'm in the Performing Arts Center to see how the students and staff are utilizing the new stage, the upgraded sound and technology, um, I'm just really grateful for the community, um, for that voter-approved bond that made those improvements possible. So, it was amazing. Um, I attended with Member Maderas and Director Stunkel, the focus group with Columbia Heights Mayor and city officials, um, for the upcoming, as, as was mentioned previously, the survey, um, to fill the police chief vacancy, which will take place at the end of April. Um, I continue to meet with members of the Latino lead organization. We're drafting a legislative bill that would strengthen and fund EL parent engagement. Um, so I've been, I've also been approached to support a bill authored by Representative Vernig that would provide school boards with more flexibility and cost savings in terms of special election timelines in cases where there is a vacant seat on the school board. So those are some bills coming up. Uh, as mentioned previously, the core planning team, um, for the strategic plan will be wrapping up this week, and the design team will begin meeting to work on the strategic priorities. So, thank you, Member Petway and Member Maderas, for participating in the core planning team. Um, and next week, at the board work session, the full board will be updated on the progress. And since our last board meeting, I've had communication with Member Hul, Member Maderas, Member Petway, Vice Chair Grandlin, and Chair Mueller. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, next, we'll move on to the Mini Adventures and Adventure Club fee increase with Director Stunkel.
Hey, uh, Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. I see that I need to be given permission to share my screen so that I can show my PowerPoint.
We will take care of that one, say it.
Thank you. Right. Are you able to see it?
We are, yes.
Wonderful. Okay. So Adventure Club and Mini Adventures fees. This is something that I come to the school board every year about, as we annually need to increase the fees due to annual fee, uh, annual increases in the cost of running the program. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. This evening, with this presentation, you'll hear the core values of community, collaboration, and integrity. So typically, in the past few years, we have needed to raise the fees 2%. This year, we need to raise the fees approximately 5%, given the increased cost for staffing. Just a reminder for all of the board members, this is a program that must be self-sustaining. We're not able to use any community ad general fund or any fees like, any, um, other sources of funding like that. So the fees are what cover the cost of the program. You'll see how the increase for Mini Adventures, which is our preschool childcare program, open from 6:30 in the morning until 6:00 PM. If a family has their child enrolled five days a week, it would go, this year, it's $308 a week. It would go up to $323 a week next year. A reminder that this change in the fees starts with the first day of school. For four days a week, you see it goes from 260 to 273. You can see the other changes, 205 to 215, 145 to 152. $73 a week for one day, um, up to 77. For Adventure Club, also approximately a 5% increase. When I say approximately, it's because we round to the, you know, nearest 50 cents. So, uh, an annual for a day, it would go, this year, it's 2150 per day. It would go up to 2250 for next school year. The drop-in after-school rate would go from 2450 to 26. The school release day would go from $48 a day to 5050 a day. And the full-day summer would also be that same school release. It's the same number of hours. Fees include meals and snacks, field trips, curriculum and program supervised by a licensed teacher. Uh, that's, both of these programs are now supervised by Jody Gadian. Um, Mini Adventures is a four-star parent-aware rated program. There are many different activities that the children enjoy. Fee assistance is available not through our school district, but through Pathways One, which is money that the parent brings through the county, Pathways Two scholarships, uh, for Mini Adventures, or through childcare assistance. This will be brought, um, for your approval, um, on the April 9th meeting. Um, and I believe that we're going to bring it through as a consent agenda item. I'm going to stop my sharing so that I can see all of you. And, uh, so, again, this is an approximately 5% increase because we anticipate the cost of staff to go up. Uh, in addition, the cost of the, uh, benefits. Uh, many of our staff receive the medical insurance and other benefits, and all of those costs have gone up. I worked with Director Hennickens to determine what would be the necessary increase in order to cover the cost of the program. And this, that is the percentage increase that, um, that we, we both found to be necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Stunkel. Questions? Mary?
Um, thank you so much for that presentation. Um, can you tell me, is this, if a family has multiple children in, is this the price per child? Or is there, um, a discount maybe? Or is there something else that's different if you have multiple children enrolled?
A price per child, regardless of how many children, because again, it has to cover the cost. And so, we don't add any extra, uh, to the, to the amount that we charge to defray or lessen prices for other people. Um, we just charge the least that we can per child.
That's what I, um, that's what my thought was. I just, I wanted to make sure that we were clear on that as well. Um, and then, can you, so when you say that we are, our prices are, um, that needs to be self-sustaining, do we make money on this at all? Or is this something that we're literally just paying, um, essentially as it, as we are?
For many school districts, childcare is a money-making part of their community ed program. For our district, it is not, because we are very committed to being very cost, uh, sensitive for the families. So we do not overcharge. Uh, we also have to factor in that there are times where there's fluctuation in the number of students that are enrolled. So there might be days where we only have children coming four days a week, but we have to cover the cost for the staffing for five days a week. So, in an ideal world, everybody would have their children in for five days, right? But, uh, we have to adjust for that.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Julie?
Actually, I kinda, um, wanna roll off of what Mary had asked. Um, so, because the revenue that we're asking, or we're charging, is estimated, um, with that 5% increase, um, if we have excess, where does that go? Is that general fund money, or is that having to stay in the program? How does that work?
Yeah, it's, it's not O1 funded. This is community ed, which is O4. So it does go into the general community ed fund. And then, that's money that, that we're able to use then to purchase new materials for the programs, um, to do extra training for the staff. So, we don't really, we don't take that money and then use it for other community ed programs. We really use that to enrich the, the Mini Adventures program or the Adventure Club program.
Thank you.
Jessica?
Thank you. Director Stunkel, you had mentioned sort of fluctuating enrollment during the year. And I, I just had a general question about these, um, about the rate proposal and enrollment. So, uh, how does, um, or how do enrollment projections factor into the, the rate adjustments for the year?
Uh, so the enrollment doesn't fluctuate that much. Like, for example, this year, we had been hoping to be, be able to open North Park, uh, but we didn't get anybody to apply to be the supervisor up there. So we've had many families on the waiting list. So we typically have families on the waiting list, and then, as there are any openings, we let families know about that so that they can move into those open slots.
Okay, so these rates are assuming, um, the current, like, flat enrollment?
Correct. The comparable capacity is what we have. And I should have mentioned earlier, we always do a cost assessment of how much are our neighboring communities charging? And we are typically just under. Sometimes you'll see that we're a little bit higher, but then you notice that our hours are longer. So, um, but we are under, um, a neighbor to the north, and, uh, we know that they are also going to be doing a comparable increase. So, we are very much, uh, similar to the local market.
And then I just had one question, just clarification. I know you had mentioned, um, that these rate, increased proposals are based on increases in, um, staff costs, um, benefit costs. I know in the cover sheet, it also mentions increases in the cost of meals. Can you speak a little bit about that piece?
So, the, um, in the cover sheet, I mentioned the meals. Well, we, we do have to cover the cost for snacks. So, while there are free, uh, meals for breakfast and lunch, if students are enrolled in an education program, students enrolled in a childcare program alone don't have free meals. So, that's, that's a little bit of a nuance. But also, um, the, some students are staying until 6:00 PM, and so we need to provide a bit of a snack with Mini Adventures, uh, later in the afternoon. So it covers some of those additional costs.
Thank you. And I should clarify, the cover letter says meal costs specific to Mini Adventures. So that makes sense based on that explanation. Thank you.
Exactly.
Great questions. Any other questions? All right, so this will be on our consent agenda. Um, so if there are any questions in the meantime, let Superintendent Stenbik know. Thank you, Director Stunkel.
Thank you very much.
Um, next, we have our high school stadium lighting project with Director Hennickens.
Thank you Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Sembic. This informational item that I have today is on Columbia Heights High School Stadium Light Project. Our mission Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values of community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation, all aligning with the board's education equity statement. Okay. This again is an informational presentation, is not governance at this point. So stadium lights, very exciting conversation, but necessary conversation. Those that have attended some of our events this past year may have been at the one that, where the stadium lights went out during the game. And it's happened a few other times where we've had a hard time getting the lights on prior to an activity, say a lacrosse game, or a soccer game, or a football game. And so we've had some challenges there with, with our current lighting system. It is old. I know the lights are not original. Some of the wiring is original. And so on, this picture here is there's four lights on each side of the stadium. These are the poles and the lights that we're talking about replacing. You can see that there's six lights per pole. And the new proposal would be four lights on two poles on each side and five lights on the other. It's just the LED can provide more light and, and can provide it more efficiently. So this is just kind of a look at what those lights look like. Through the process, this isn't like the whole picture of it, but they do a study. So they have their, you know, everybody's got an algorithm for something. Their fancy little program that, you know, based on the measurements of where these lights are, in accordance to the field, in accordance to the stands, in accordance to the track itself, you know, the, basically the facility there and what the lights currently are providing. And they can put a number to what that value, light value will be. If you, we have three different providers that have provided a quote for, for us on this, and there's three different types of value system that they use. It's very interesting. Like, why are here, is it 21? And then this one is 43? Well, they're just using a different measure of value for what the light's going to be there. But they all are basically doing the same thing. And, you know, again, because of timeliness, you know, we need to move forward with this project fairly quickly if we're going to make sure that we don't have the same issues this fall, that we had last fall, in using that space. So we, we went out to three different companies. Typically when we go out for quotes from companies, this doesn't come to the school board, but the administration, Zena and myself, had authorization from the school board to sign contracts of 175,000, or less than 175,000, not over 175,000. So these are, three, or two of the companies used pre-bid contracts, one of them didn't. Thankfully, the company that used the pre-bid contract is the lowest responsible bidder, did use a pre-bid. So that means in this, in this case, I can come to the board and ask for permission similar to what I did for the gym floor. We, you know, we had two, in that case, it was the exact same thing. We had two that provided a, a quote on a, on a pre-bid contract and one that didn't. And the one that did was the lowest responsible bidder and had a pre-bid contract. So Musco Lighting was the low responsible bidder. We have looked at other stadiums that they have done and are happy with that. And so at the next board meeting, we'll be seeking, or the April 9th meeting, seeking approval to move forward with that project to replace the stadium lights. With the new package, it'll also provide, as typically in, in football stadiums, they probably provide some uplighting too, which seems weird to light up into the sky, but it provides lighting that allows them to see the football better when the football's thrown way up in the air or kicked way up in the air. It provides better lighting so it doesn't get up into the shadows, you know, if the lights aren't high enough. So that's the typical lighting that they add on to that. So this, again, we collected proposals in the fall/winter as we move forward. This evening is an informational item, again, April 9th, and we, again, intend to start this project as soon as we can, as soon as they can get the equipment, and to get this done prior to that football season starting.
Questions for Director Hennigan's?
Julie. So Brian, where, excuse me. What fund is this coming from?
Yes. Thank you. I have it written down here, and it, so it comes out of Capital Projects Levy. So, you know, there's a component of that Capital Projects Levy that we, we said to the community we will, and we will continue to use for athletic facilities, and that's where this is funded from. Yeah.
Other questions? Jessica.
I'm sorry if I missed it, but on that, the slide on the bids, can you explain that alternate bid line?
Oh, thank you. Yes. So alternate bid, this is, this is where colleges get very interested in the alternate bid. Basically, you can implement a lighting system similar to like our Performing Arts Center, where we can do like performance-type lighting, where you can do all sorts of fancy lighting to music and, and, you know, different colors, and you can really ramp up your lighting system. Obviously, it's, it's not a significant amount of money to be able to do that, but it's also something long-term we have to maintain. And again, it's not typical in a high school stadium. So they always throw it in there. I shouldn't say always, because the one company didn't throw it in there because they knew we would never take it. So it is, it is a little extreme. I mean, obviously, it'd be fun and cool, but they show videos of different music and, you know, but no, that's what that is. So we are just looking at the base bid, just replacing the lights with LED and updating the wiring.
So it's more of like a supplemental?
Yes.
Bid? Okay. Because I think the word alternate, like not, that not being my wheelhouse, like I look at that and I think like, oh, is that, there's an alternative? Like, we can do something for only $15,000?
For $15,000?
So I just wanted to be clear with, for folks watching. Thank you.
Option one is 192,750. Option two is 15,000.
Right. So just, just to be clear, $15,000 is not, not a.
You get what you pay for, Jennifer.
Exactly. Like, we're renting it.
$15,000 will not get us a new lighting system.
$15,000 is you standing there with like flashlight?
I mean, because Director Hennigan's does do a lot. So just add that to it.
Thank you for that.
Other questions? All right.
Oh, Julie. I just have a comment. I, you know, lighting is so important for not only just to enjoy the games, but for safety. And so I just want to point that out, that having lighting, appropriate lighting is really critical for our students and for parents who come and, you know, just to be able to see and be able to enjoy the games as well, so.
Actually, I do have a question. Um, we're not, presently, we have incandescent lighting out there.
Yes.
So what are we looking at? We're looking at less units, fewer lights, an LED on top of it. What are we looking at for efficiencies?
For sure, there'll be efficiencies. I mean, for how much our stadium is on, I mean, we're not going to see big dollars in electrical savings. We will definitely see some level of savings from it, because they're significantly more efficient. I do believe that the lights that are up there right now, you know, they range from 15 years plus. So they, they definitely are energy hogs. But again, they, they're not on all day. So they're on for windows of time during events. You know, and again, it's more than football. It's, it's, there's other events that happen out there, of course. So, but we'll definitely see some. I can't give you a monetary amount though.
Can we get like solar panels to like, charge them up and stuff? I've seen them over in some parking lots where they have the silver panels to charge their, their outdoor lighting.
We are, we are working on more solar in the district.
Yeah, I know.
And the nice thing about the solar that we're doing now is it's energy that's produced, it's energy that we're consuming right away. And so we're seeing, we're really seeing, should be seeing the instant savings by just less of a bit coming from Excel Energy, so.
Thank you.
Other questions? If you have any, certainly let us know. I'm voting on this at the April 9th meeting.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to our action items. The first item of our action item is the Achievement and Integration Budget with Executive Director Nimbley.
Good evening Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Sembic. Two weeks ago, I came and presented the 2025 Achievement Integration Budget, and tonight I am here seeking approval for the budget as presented.
Can I please get a motion to approve the Achievement and Integration Budget for 2024, 2025 as presented? So moved. Mary, in a second.
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? Jessica.
I just wanted to note that at the last board meeting, we did have a, a presentation on all of various components of the budget, and we, we did have some good discussion and quite a few questions. So if anyone is interested in that, to go back to that meeting and, and look at that. And then I also just wanted to thank Bondo for providing the additional information that I had requested. I know that went out in our board packet, looking at the difference between PD and administrative costs that are part of the Achievement and Integration Budget. So I appreciate that additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, Karen Nimbley, proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you Executive Director Nimbley.
You're welcome.
Next, we have the Columbia Heights High School Wear Washing Space Alterations. Director Hennigan's is back again.
Thank you.
I egregiously left my cover sheet.
Thank you. Thank you.
The recommendation and bid results. So I'm handing out a piece of paper. And thankfully, I counted correctly.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Sembic. Again, previous meeting, on the February 20th meeting, presented on the High School Wear Washing Alterations product, project. And on February 22nd, we had a bid opening. And as I presented in the information of meeting, I sent the memo, in memo to the board, the bid results. These are also attached to the agenda tonight. And the lowest responsible bidder, as recommended by ASTR, was Deering Pearson Group with a base bid of $256,495 and an alternate bid of $27,900. The alternate bid was something that was desired to have happen within the project, but it was a matter of affordability within the, the three funding streams that we're using. And that was to move the, the big three-compartment washing sink from the main prep area to the wear wash space, where they're actually cleaning the, the dishes and stuff. And then to put preparation tables in, so additional prep space in along the wall where that three-compartment sink was. It takes some plumbing work. There's some sewer trap work that needs to happen with that move, but, and then also there's some asbestos removal within the kitchen area that that factors into this alterations or the alternate bid as well. As with our buildings that were built in the, you know, in the late 50s and 60s, there's always something that we have to deal with. We were pretty confident we didn't have it there, but the, because the tiles are not nine-by-nine tiles, they're 12-inch tiles, so typically we don't have to worry about that. Tiles are fine. It's the glue that they used to glue the tiles down. So that created a, you know, another additional cost. But, so we're, we are still actually very happy with where things are. We're using, as I said, a combination of funds. Food service can pay for equipment, and long-term facility maintenance dollars will pay for some of the projects, some of the hot water heater work, and piping, plumbing work that needs to be done to bring that up to, to current codes. And then Capital Projects Levy dollars will, will pay, pick up the remainder of it. So this evening, as again presented before and provided in the memo, we're seeking approval for the board.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to award the base bid and alternate bid to Deering Pearson Group in the amount of $284,395 for the High School Wear Washing Alterations Project? So moved. Laura, in a second.
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? Jessica.
I just wanted to make sure that we could get a copy of this cover sheet in the public materials that are available, if it's not already there.
Absolutely.
Yeah, just the, on, in board book, the very first page of the presentation is the letter from the consultant that has the, this information on it as well. But, yes, thank you.
I guess, I mean, for the public that's here, we have that, the board materials in the back of the room, making sure that that's, that's part of it.
Perfect. Yes, thank you. Mary.
And just so we're clear, we did do both the base and the alternate bid in this approval that we just did.
Correct.
We haven't voted yet.
Or one, sorry. Thank you. It's been a long day.
Yes, we're seeking approval for both the base bid and alternate bid.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have health insurance and dental bids with Director Bennett. And Director Hennigan's.
Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Sembic. Back on February 20th, we presented on HITO, which is the Health Insurance Transparency and Accountability Act. It's something that the district has to go out every two years to do. Currently, the district is with Health Partners. We've been with Health Partners since July of 2022. And prior to that, we were with Blue Cross Blue Shield through the South Central Service Cooperative. We received four best and final bids through the HITO process, and the decision really came down between Health Partners and Blue Cross Blue Shield. And in your package, you can see that a 7-1 24 rate increase, Health Partners came in at 10.5 with a 12% cap in year two, and Blue Cross Blue Shield came in at a 3.6% with a 10% cap in year two. NIS, who we work with, our insurance broker, went through to make sure that the plans are comparable. I think it's like a 97% matchup, so it is very comparable. So the recommendation is to accept the bid from Blue Cross Blue Shield effective July 1st, 2024, and the District Health Insurance Committee does support this decision. And then we also are going to remain with Delta Dental, and the district is self-funded, and the rates are set by the district, so it's not the same process. There would be a cost if we switched dental carriers. And again, the District Health Insurance Committee is in support of this stay with Delta Dental. So tonight, I'm here seeking approval of the bid from Blue Cross Blue Shield and to remain with Delta Dental.
Thank you. We'll start with a motion and second, then we'll have discussion. Can I get a motion to approve the bid from Blue Cross Blue Shield effective July 1st, 2024, and to remain with Delta Dental? So moved. Mary, in a second.
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
So the Delta Dental is currently funded by us specifically, and I know that fund was getting really, really low. It looked really low anyway, when I last looked at the numbers. Have we increased the rate that we're collecting from staff as well for Delta Dental? I mean, it didn't say what the rate increase.
Yeah, the, there have been increases over time. This year, we don't anticipate an increase to that at all. It is, the, the fund balance has been traditionally around between 100 and 200,000. I think last year, we were at 90-some thousand. And, but we did predict that this year, we would have a net gain versus a net loss. So I think we've, we've had a net loss in five, four out of the last six years. But this, this year, I think we're, we're fine. And NIS, I work with NIS, our broker, and we look at the rates, and we look at claims, and we, you know, look at where that's going to trend. And so for this year, we both felt pretty confident we could hold and. Um, and so for this year, we both felt pretty confident we could hold and and just keep that rate the same.
Yeah, of course, my concern is that we would go negative. Um, so I just want to make sure that we're watching that.
Yeah, absolutely. We do. Thank you.
Other discussion? Jessica?
I'm wondering if you can remind us, um, who's represented on the Health Insurance Committee for the district?
Yes, so we have teacher representatives, there's an education assistant, food service, clerical, custodial, directors, principal, or NIS representatives, the benefit specialist. I think that's everybody, but there's a wide variety of people that are on the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was actually going to be my question as well. Any other questions or discussion? All right, Karen Nambal proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Um, next we have the calendar for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. Director Bennett?
Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. Again, at the February twentieth meeting, I presented a draft of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school calendar. Um, and your packet was the final, um, draft. The committee is meeting again this week to work on the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar, so that'll come forward at a future board meeting. But tonight, I'm here seeking approval of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school calendar.
I'm looking at the suggested motion. Um, do I need to read the entire suggestion motion on this?
Parliamentary.
I think it just has to be in the minutes. That's what I've been told.
Okay. Well, you know what? I'll go for it then.
Get it, girl.
Can I please get a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five district calendar as presented and pursuant to Minnesota Statutes one twenty-eight dot forty-two. The governing body of any district may contract with any of the teachers of the district for the conduct of school, for the conduct of schools and make contact schools on either, good thing I took the science of reading, on either or any of the following holidays, provided that a clause to this effect is inserted into the teacher's contract. Martin Luther King's birthday, Lincoln's and Washington's birthdays, Indigenous Peoples' Days and Veterans' Day. On Martin Luther King's birthday, Washington's birthday, Lincoln's birthday, and Veterans' Day, at least one hour of the school program must be devoted to patriotic observance of the day. On Indigenous Peoples' Day, at least one hour of the school program must be devoted in observance of the day. That's the motion I'm asking for.
I have an amendment.
Yes.
I don't know if, can I do that now? Um, it's Martin Luther King Junior's birthday.
Yep, so Martin Luther King Junior's birthday, um, in two occasions, is the amended motion. Can I get a second to the amended motion, to amending the motion?
There wasn't a motion on the floor yet.
I jumped the gun.
Oh, you jumped again.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So you could just.
Can I?
No, since no one's moved that motion, you could just.
So the.
Read it.
Okay.
Motion.
Okay, so then we will, I love Robert's Rules of Order. So I'm not going to read that again. Um, but for a motion, as previously read, noting Martin Luther King Junior's birthday in.
Multiple spots.
Multiple locations. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Thank you, Laura, and a second.
Second.
Second by Michelle. Is there any discussion? All right, Karen Nambal proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you, Director Bennett.
No, now we have to.
Oh, were we just doing the?
That was just the amendment.
The motion of the amendment. Now it's the motion on the.
Nope, nope, because there was not a motion.
There was no, she had just read the motion, the recommended motion. There was no motion on the floor because no one had moved it. So what we did was voted on the motion.
As amendment, as, yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Yes.
It was a friendly amendment.
Yes.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Um, I was so perplexed. Uh, can I just say, um, as those of us with children and those of us who work in the district, um, looking at the, everybody who's here tonight as well, um, this is the longest part of the year when there is so many days of school straight without a break. Um, so I really appreciate the work that everybody has done on this calendar for twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, because there's less of that, and I will just say my, my children, thank you, everybody who worked really hard on that calendar committee, so.
Thank you, Mary. All right, um, next we will move on, um, continue with Director Bennett, um, and Director Hennekenz, you're listed on here as well, um, for the termination of probationary teacher contracts, resolution number one.
I think we should just keep him up there.
Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. Tonight, the school board is presented with the resolution to terminate non-renew the employment contracts of the listed probationary teachers. This is the first of possibly two resolutions to be brought forward this spring. This resolution includes tier-one teachers whose license expires in June of two thousand twenty-four. Tier-two teachers with a June two thousand twenty-four expiration date. Long-term substitutes who only sign a one-year teaching contract, which we've already hired back too. Um, probationary teachers with an out-of-field permission, uh, which we have to either reapply for. And probationary teachers non-renewed for performance. So tonight, I'm here seeking approval of this resolution.
Thank you. Since this is a resolution, I will read the resolution. Resolution related to the termination of non-renewal of the teaching contracts of probationary teachers. Whereas the following persons are probationary teachers in Independent School District Number Thirteen, it's listed on the resolution. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number Thirteen that pursuant to the Minnesota Statutes one twenty-two A dot forty, subdivision five, the teaching contracts of those persons listed on page two of this resolution, probationary teachers in Independent School District Number Thirteen are hereby terminated and not renewed at the close of the current two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to said teachers regarding termination and non-renewal of his or her contract as provided by law, and that said notice shall be in substantially the following form. The following form is notice of termination and non-renewal addressed to the teacher. You are hereby notified that a regular meeting of the School Board of Independent School District Number Thirteen held on March twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, a resolution was adopted to terminate your contract effective at the end of the current school year and to not renew your contract for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. Said action of the board is taken pursuant to Minnesota Statute one twenty-two A dot four zero subdivision five. Can I get a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Laura, and a second.
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion?
I, I would just say this is the, one of the hardest, um, nights of the year as a school board member. Um, it's, we are a very small community and a very small school community. And so, um, I'm grateful that over the years, this has evolved and that, um, with a lot of input from staff and admin altogether. It still is incredibly hard because, uh, as we know, that, you know, our students, uh, have created really good relationships, um, in learning with these staff, and it's, it's bittersweet. Yeah.
Michelle?
Um, so I guess I'm wondering, like, reasoning. So is, are there all specific reasons for certain people? Or is it all due to cost? Or is it all, like, how is it, how is this determined?
Yeah, and I'll start, and then Director Bennett can fill in. Um, so the resolution tonight is, is not necessarily related to our, um, resolution of efficiencies. Um, there is, we are statutorily required and based on teacher licensing, required to non-renew certain contracts, to send this letter out to probationary teachers. So a good portion of this list are teachers who have, whose license expire, um, are on probationary licenses. Director Bennett said tier-one licensure, long-term subs. Those are contractually required that we do this process with them. They can reapply or be invited back to reapply. Um, and then there are, you know, because we, we want to make sure if there is a teacher who is not being asked back related to performance, um, that we do that in conjunction with something else. So there's not, you know, as, as Vice Chair Granland said, there's, it's a small community. So we want to make sure that we're not necessarily super overt about that, so. Um, but Director Bennett, did you want to add anything in?
Answered it correctly.
Yeah, no, thanks. I mean, you kind of answered some sub-questions in there, so thank you very much.
Yeah, perfect. Um, any other discussion? Uh, Jessica?
Um, well, I really appreciate Director Petway's question. I think, um, because this process has evolved. If you're not part of these board discussions, um, if you're a parent or a member of the staff or a community member, I think it can be really confusing to look at what our, what our process looks like each year and how the budgetary pieces fit into that versus some of the other, um, some of the other non-renewals that happen. So, um, I appreciate that explanation. I think, well, I know that we'd also mentioned that, um, we'll, i-if we need to have a second round, um, of non-renewals, that we would do that. Um, and so we've talked about that as a board too, but again, just so everybody understands what that process looks like. Could you remind us a little bit about that, that timeline then, as we move forward into May?
So then, um, in April or beginning of May, we'll bring, if we have a resolution of, um, probationary teachers that we just do not have a position for, um, just based on numbers in the classroom, those will be brought forward on a different resolution.
And the timing for that is usually?
Usually it's April, beginning of May. We have to let them know by June first.
Thank you.
But we can anticipate that, um, probably on the, if, if, if there needs to be that, then there will, that would be on our April twenty-third, I believe, agenda, roughly.
And then the reason for that, um, for the, why we do it also in two stages is to allow people, if we had to let them go, um, to find positions at other school districts due to hiring timelines at other districts as well. Is that correct? Kind of is that, may I remember?
We try to do this processes early and as soon as we possibly can, given, you know, all of the factors. So that, that's definitely one. You know, the sooner people know, the sooner they can, you know, start seeking alternative employment, if that's the case. Um, as Chair Mueller mentioned, many of the folks that we're voting on, or that the board is voting on tonight, um, will be asked back or, and, and have already probably been asked back at this point. Um, so then that gives us the opportunity to really drill down and and look at the finances and see, you know, are there programs, are there positions that that we still need to reduce?
Wonderful, thank you. Sometimes do we get a retirement in between, and so we're able to save another person because of a retirement or resignation. So we kind of try to have them two separate spots with that second one. Sometimes we can free up a spot because somebody has resigned or retired.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any other discussion? Right, since this is a resolution, um, this will be a roll call vote. Um, Michelle, will you do the roll, please?
Yes, um, who?
Aye.
Madeiras?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Granland?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Petway? Aye.
Thank you. Resolution's approved. Um, next, thank you, Director Bennett and Director Hennekenz. Um, next we have board topics. We'll start with Julie.
Okay, so during my review of expenses, um, I found it, one of the checks that was written out was to pay for a family in crisis rent. And I was kind of surprised by that because I didn't think a school district was a social service agency. And so I think one of the things that I'd like to understand a little bit more is how much money we're getting through the, from the county for such items. What kind of services are we to provide in that case? I mean, we're obviously administering these funds, which takes FTE, um, from, and, and this case, it was one of our directors had to go through and do the research to make sure that these people were eligible and, and all of that. And that time, um, I'm just not sure that's what we're here for. And so I kind of like to understand how much money we're getting from the county and how we're, you know, why we're doing this process. I, I mean, I understand children in crisis can't learn. Well, you know, there's a lot of other reasons kids can't learn. And so, you know, whether they, you know, we feed them because they're hungry. We, you know, but at some point, the school district's mission is to educate, not necessarily to provide a lot of social services. That's where the county and, you know, cities and so on come in, um, and nonprofits. So I just want to kind of understand that.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful, um, if, um, if the board could provide it information on, um, on how that works in our district, as well as how frequently, um, you know, and you don't have to go back ten years or anything, but just, um, you know, anecdotally, how, how frequently, um, we provide, um, that service and what that looks like in terms of staffing and and needs. So it's a good question, Julie. Laura?
Hi, I just had a question, um, with the community school and the process that we're going through with that.
Laura?
You speak up.
I'm sorry. It was too, it was too loud before. I was, um, with the community school, um, Valley View over there.
Um, is this the type of thing that we would be providing service for?
So the Department of Education extended the grant window, they took, actually, they took it down and then finally they reposted it. So that grant is due March twenty-ninth for the Valley View Community School. Um, and, and yes, in part, right now, the Anoka County, ACCFC, Anoka County Children and Families, something?
Services?
ACCFC, what would the LSC be for? Don't know. Uh, that's really for, you know, across the district. It's not for a specific stu-, uh, school or student. Um, and it is run through our special services department. Um, and so, for example, we've had a couple of house fires that involved students in the community. Uh, we can support with, through that, through that county funding, we can support with, um, gift cards. I know that we're, um, working on, um, not only finding furniture, but free delivery of the furniture to some of our families right now, and certainly Valley View is included in, in that, um, that ongoing right now. But yeah, I mean, the full-service community school is also about dental care onsite, medical care onsite, after, you know, robust after care, after-school care, things like that, too.
Superintendent, um, it's Anoka County Children and Family Council.
Council, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I know when we had the discussion about, uh, Valley View seeking designation as a full-service community school, we also talked about, um, maybe a future conversation or information with the board about the overall goals of, um, uh, full-service community schools. Um, I know that that's a model that's based on a lot of data and looks at outcomes, um, of doing that work, of centering those services and those resources within school communities, the impact that that has on student success. Um, and so I would just be interested too in learning more about that as a model and what the, what the impacts and the data show from that, um, you know, nationally. I know that's maybe a big ask, but I, I think as we're moving forward about, you know, Valley View and looking at potentially other buildings, that that would be good.
Definitely, I can definitely easily pull the research. Not a big ask.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get, um, information on those. Thanks, Julie, for bringing that up. Thanks, Jessica, too. Um, other board topics? Jessica?
I just wanted to note that Highland is hosting their annual book bash event this week on Thursday from six to seven-thirty. Um, and there are going to be some read-alouds with special guests, my understanding, as well as some games and some giveaways, um, free ice cream sandwiches. Um, so, uh, encourage folks that are part of the Highland community to, to come out for that.
Thank you. Any other board topics? All right, um, with that, we will adjourn the meeting at seven oh eight.